So we will call the meeting. At seven oh seven. Thanks everyone for joining tonight. Shortly, we have a motion to accept you.
I'm.
Okay, and second?
I'll second.
All right, Richard, thank you. I'm in favor. Okay. I'll post. Okay. And then the main minutes, motion to. Prove the main minutes. Okay, in a second.
I'll second.
All right, any comments, questions, corrections, changes? Okay, all in favor?
All right.
Okay. All righty, moving right along. The planning calendar, there's actually not really much to note on that. This, this time, I think we're gonna touch on all of it in separate reports. But rather than believe.
Patty.
How are you? Good to see you. We just got started. So we can, I think, just skip over that unless anybody has anything they wanted to comment on. All right. Onto the director's report.
Okay, so upcoming programs. On tomorrow night is teen night, which is what all the supplies are there for. We're gonna do.
We're a little concerned about the toilet paper.
Why is like, it is a game where you unroll a thing, toilet paper from like across the table or off floor. But a heavy object on the toilet paper and then the kid has to pull the toilet paper back up without breaking the toilet paper. So we're doing games with these kids. We're gonna split them up into four groups. Usually we have about twenty kids, so we'll open the group. And they're going to have to do the toilet paper thing. They're gonna have to see who can put, what team can put a puzzle together the fastest. What team can do the penny drop, where you drop a penny into the water bucket and hope that it'll get to the middle cup that's submerged in the water. And then there's another one. Oh, they have to transfer M and M's from one place to another using a straw. So, and then we have prizes for the first place winners are gonna get target gift certificates. And the second place winners are gonna get stewards. Third place gets a box of candy and fourth place gets a little candy. Yeah, exactly. Nope, that's tomorrow night. So Rebecca and I will be doing our usual pizza. So just wanna try to keep them as occupied as possible. Things got a little rowdy at the last one, so we needed to. Try to rein it in a bit. Hopefully it will, if it does rain, we'll do everything inside. But if it doesn't, we'll try and be out. See. And then on Saturday, we have our summer reading kickoff party. We are doing adopt a stuffy. You can see we have three bags and a bin of stuffed animals that are going to try and find new homes. Frost. Then we're also doing our reptile show and also doing the drug prescription drug take back at the same time. Should be an interesting, interesting crowd.
Yeah. Stuffie.
All together now. I'm not crazy about it this year. Next year's gonna be great because it's all about art. Your world or something like that. But yeah, it's a little.
Yeah.
Um, so book group is coming up, another night of knitting and crocheting. I'm gonna be out starting on the probably, I might even say the twentieth until the twenty sixth when I'm home from our wedding that we're going to. I'll probably be doing some finalizing things on like that Tuesday, but not a huge amount because. Need a break. And then summer camp starts on fifth. And I haven't really gotten tremendous amounts set up yet for upcoming programs. I do wanna do. I have been having a lot of people asking if we're gonna do live at the library again. So I thought instead of doing live at the library with people we don't know, it's gonna be locals live at the library. So like if he has time or some other people have time and do it maybe like once or twice during each month of like July, September or July, August, and then maybe September. That way it'll hopefully draw people, you know, because we're seeing trends and spotlighting the people of Steven Town. I thought that that might be a better way to do it than bringing people who no one knows. So I have to get working on that part as well. Which will be. Okay, so our storytelling. Things have been going really well in terms of programming. Last teen night, we had twenty kids. Lego club, we still have, you know, decent crew coming. We have some new kids coming now that school's over. Storytime last yesterday. Yes, yesterday, fourteen children, which is one of the highest numbers we've ever had. So that was, it was great and they had a lot of fun and everybody had. D and D is going well. We had to cancel. I know, I did not cancel. The Alzheimer's Association of Northeastern New York canceled our ten top, top ten warning signs of Alzheimer's because we didn't have enough people signed up. Even though we had three people registered and I had at least one other person who was, I didn't know they were gonna come. So it's just what it is. We're not gonna be able to work with them because we can't get the registration they're gonna want. Oh, the other thing that's coming up too is the, we're doing a blood drive on the twenty second. And the new member. Events slash reception on August sixth. Sarah will go over all of that. So, and then my mandala painting, I had. Twelve adults, one child and two teenagers and a puppy. That, so that went really, really well. And then yesterday, we had three people, or two people for the crocheting and the knitting. So you know, it's definitely getting busy and mahjong today was, it was packed. I don't know how many. Seven, yeah. Yeah, that was a great number. So now that the schools are letting out, it's, we're gonna be picking up, picking back up again. The other thing that's bringing up circulation right, or excuse me, um, visits right now is the expedition. It is, we've had two hundred and fifty something visits for adults to, as of today. So it's, it's amazing how well it's working out and people come in at least two or three times a day. And, oh, your expedition. Yeah. Oh, good. Well, we always try to, you know, welcome them warmly and it's very interesting to see people coming in, where they're coming from and, you know, what they're interested in talking about. So it's been good.
Can you explain, I mean, you have to know, but I don't. What, what it is exactly, what's driving people to come and what, are they supposed to say they went to this many libraries?
Yeah, so at each library you get a stamp. And you get, it's almost like a little passport, but it's a map of all of the Upper Hudson libraries, libraries and there's thirty six of them. So you go to each one, you get a stamp. There's like a little scavenger hunt to take, to do. But if you make it to all thirty six, you become a thirty sixer and you get a gold library card. And those of us who already did the thirty six exhibition, expedition last time, we get a platinum card. So I'm going to be working on that soon.
What does that get you?
Another part to keep you while. No, but whenever you pull out that thirty six card, that gold card and they're like, oh, you're a thirty sixer. Go to your sixth library, you get a little sticker. Well, if I didn't get an announcement. You get a car decal, you know, things like that. So there's a little.
Mostly other libraries.
Oh, no, it's everybody, all people out of all walkers, like. It's, it's beautiful. We finish, it finishes July thirty first. So we've got, we've got another month and a half. You don't have to, you can start wherever you want.
Okay.
We have passports here, yeah, so you can get yours here. Yeah, the guy who did him was great. Love it. If you wanna see it, I'll pull, I'll go grab some of them. So let's get to here. That's great. Yeah, and we never, I've never heard anyone say, oh, I know. You know, it's almost everybody's always like, oh, this is beautiful. We love this place. I didn't even know it existed. Oh, so maybe if those don't go, well. Here, you have to take this, you don't take it, I'm taking my stamp back. I need to stay on good terms with our fellow directors. Some people. It's been great. Yeah, it's, and honestly, it is fun to do because everybody's so excited about it. So if you get a chance, it is fun and it is cool to see all the different. You know, my favorite was Rensselaerville. That was just, it was just the greatest, beautiful, beautiful building. It's really old and, you know, mahogany wood and gorgeous. So there's lots of things, you know, so if you get a chance, it's fun. I like it. I think I'm gonna force my kids to do it with me again, even though they don't want to, but they have, they might have to. So yeah, so our numbers have definitely gone up because of that and we are keeping track. Upper Hudson has a way of, that we scan a card every time someone comes in so we can know exactly how many people come to our library. Actually, I could pull those numbers up in a minute if you want, but I can do that later. So visits are definitely up. Circulation is also up for the month. Or for May, it was up. Nothing huge there. Registered patrons, I'm still working on getting out a list of, you know. Hey, your, your library card expired. Come on back. You can see how many items we took in this month. And we did withdraw ninety two items because I'm clearing out our reference section. So that's been a process which is working slow. Okay, so we were closed on Monday for Memorial Day. I've been working a lot with Ari and Jess, getting ready for summer camp. I'll let Ari talk about all of that stuff. I will say though, that we have a new food vendor for summer food. So hopefully they will do something better than they did last year because last year was terrible. They've got high hopes. We met, building committee met, so I met with everybody there. We did have just put in our blood pressure monitors. I have two that can go out to the public and one that stays in the library. We did receive a training on how to use those with, the American Heart Association came here and showed us how to do it. We however, are still gonna give everybody our. Waiver that says we are not liable if you have a heart attack. So hopefully those will go well. And then in conjunction with those, I had a meeting with T-Mobile regarding their government access or program to help communities. Be, stay connected basically. So they give libraries free devices and then a discounted rate on plans to then. So that we can hand or loan out or keep here, depending on what we wanna do. iPads, phone books, modems, phones that have hotspots or just hotspots. So I met with them again this morning, which is why I didn't have it on my director's report, but they gave us. I've got some numbers here that I would just need to run by everybody so that we can kind of see whether or not it's something that. Is so, that we would like to do. My thought was to get two iPads, one for the library that stays here and one that would go out either by itself or with a blood pressure monitor. And it would have then the app for the blood pressure monitor on it and someone could take it out for two weeks, do all their recordings and then, you know, send it to their doctors or whatever. We could also put in for telehealth medicine on them. We could do, I mean, we could put, heck, I could even put like videos on it so kids, people can take it home and watch a movie or, you know. There's a lot of stuff that we can do and they have things where they, they take care of everything in terms of making sure we have all the parameters set to how we want it. So no one's viewing anything, then they teach you, there's a website or an app that I would just go on to delete anything that was already on it. So as soon as it comes back, we can just wipe it. So they do customize it. They also give you free screen protectors and cases for all of the things. If the device does not come back, we can shut it down. They call it brick wall, bricking it, I think. And then they give you anyone free charge, no cost. They, they say they understand that this is what these, what happens and if, you know, it happens and hopefully people will give it back. But if they don't, they understand. Exactly, but then you've got people who are all embarrassed because, oh, I had it shut down on me, now what do I do? But if we know who took it out, we can reach out. So, and it would only go out to people here, they would not be requestable, just like the blood pressure monitors are not requestable there. Can only be taken out here. I wanna say Borisville. And Troy Lancingburg. There might have been one other. No, not everyone's doing it, but it's also been one of those like a slow roll. So I'm, my guess is that it'll start to go out.
I'm no caller.
So. It is very well thought out and they did show us. This area is covered primarily by the four G network, which is four G LTE. There are some spots that are five G and then a couple little tiny blips in the mountains that don't get any service, which. So you know, there's little spots that you can't use it for, but I mean, it's not a big thing. But one of the things that they also were telling me about was where they have. A. It's called, where is it? A Samsung Galaxy, oh, that's a tablet. It's a phone, you know, you get a, you can do a phone and then it has a hotspot in it. So someone can use that device as a hotspot or as you can use it for, you know, whatever else you need. My thought had been, let's do the two iPads and then see how that goes. And then if we can do more, that would be great. So, but. It's kind of, it's kind of neat. It's like, yeah, we can have that app and they can keep track of it all and. Exactly. Um, so it's. I would, it would be a week and then a renewal for another week if we, if they really need. So we would keep one here though, to use with our, our thing. But then we can also use, we can actually update our square and use the square. Credit card. Thing on that instead of using the old one that we have, because we have a very, very old iPad that I don't know it's gonna last for much longer. But let me just find out where the line is. So you get an eighteen percent discount on the line. So it would be for iPads, it would be nineteen dollars and twenty seven cents per iPad a month. So it does, it's gonna, it would go up a little bit. So per year for two iPads, it would be about four hundred and sixty two dollars plus taxes and, you know, whatever taxes we can't get out of because we're. Even though we're tax exempt, there are some that you still have to pay. So I mean, it would be another cost that we would have to decide that, you know, is that something we wanna give a try? Try it for years, see how it works or not, you know? So I wanted to put that out there and just, I can send this email back out to everybody if you want and just everyone can take a look at it and then let me know what the thought is or.
Would the focus be that people would do it in tandem with the blood pressure machines? Would that be our push or?
No. No, I would say just. Yeah, I'd say that's just a perk, that you can, you know, use that blood pressure monitor too. So.
No one uses it.
Okay, yep. We could definitely do that.
Yeah, I, I think that makes it more appealing because I didn't, not nothing money wise and things are so hard to judge what's gonna actually get used. Exactly. We can say, okay, monitor it and give it whatever, four or six months and then it's like, it's really.
I will make sure that there's no commitment. I'm pretty sure. I'm like ninety nine point nine percent positive. She said there was none, but I will make sure first before we go and say we'll commit to that.
Is that like unlimited data?
Unlimited.
It's not like one person will borrow it and then.
Nope, unlimited data. Yep. It says T-Mobile Q two promos on government unlimited for tablets plan. It's originally twenty three fifty, but now there's a New York State discount of eighteen percent, which that brings it. To. The nineteen twenty seven, which is includes eleven gigabytes data of the hotspot that is put into it. But you, it is a sixty four gigabyte iPad, ninth generation. So it's a four hundred and sixty dollar value. But they also can adjust it and change things so that we can add different languages onto it if we had. We don't have a big Spanish population, but if we did, we could do that. They can change things so that it can be, you know, easier to be read by, you know, older eyes or whatever. So we can try, but yeah, monthly service, voice, unlimited voice, text and. We would ask to have that done. We would, I would figure that out. I'm gonna reach out to the other libraries that have iPads and what kind of controls they have. Cause yeah, we don't need anyone coming back with like porn or whatever sites on it. I know. So, yeah, so I don't know. If you wanna look through this again, like look through this email that I have or, and then make, let me know if it's okay. Or if you wanted to say, let's go ahead and try it for six months. Yeah. Yeah.
I mean, I, I think I'd be comfortable saying, or if there's. And if we can, I think evaluate. You know, three months and then.
Oh, that's a good question. I don't know. Oh, wait, hold on a second. Device promos change every quarter. The cost of the plan will stay the same, assuming you are on the New York State OGS. I don't know what that stands for. Thank you. So that must be the devices that would change if we were to do it. Yeah, so the plan stays the same. So, so give it a try.
Yeah.
All right. So.
We're gonna try two, one that circulates and one that stays here. The one that stays here, is it for people to use while they're here?
Yep. Yep, they can borrow it just like they could.
So the thing is that. Around the same, maybe not years. Oh, no, I was gonna say, why do we need data? That, that's made it make sense.
Right.
Only makes sense for them to circulate.
And also if they're gonna be here, are they able to listen to things on it?
Yeah, we get headphones. I'll get headphones.
Okay, definitely.
Well, but definitely like, I mean, it's, we have tablets right now and if you don't have your buds, you can't.
No, yeah, we can.
Well, it's for audio bad.
That's a good question.
Yeah, why would we be paying for a data plant?
Maybe, maybe you only pay if they take it out. For the data.
No, because they would still use their Wi-Fi. Their data service, so we would only get one then to lend out. That's the other, yeah, I mean, we'd have to definitely look through it and see if it was worth the money that we're spending per month if no one's taking the thing out to use. But that's what would be the reason.
Maybe we only get one. And we make it available to circulate and it's not circulating and we see it stop using it all.
Yeah. Yeah. All right, I think that's a better idea.
Check with Pissfield, I don't know if they have iPads that they don't have.
I would be surprised if they did.
They did not.
If they did. Yeah, I would be surprised if they did not have one.
Yes.
Did you, are you good?
OGS.
We are. Sure. We are, I, I get discounts with like Northco and all those because the, we have some kind of something. So I think we are on it.
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure we are.
And in any event, all that means is that.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we need two thirty one a year if we're getting.
Yes. Well, plus taxes.
Cause we're not completely captive and there's those like the nine one ones.
Exactly. Okay, so that was all, that, that was kind of my, my bigger thing for this month. I did, but then for the, after I wrote the report, in terms of the veterans. We're moving closer to getting them, letting them use their space for their statue that they have. I can actually, I pull it up. It, it is years in the making. Yeah, well, there, we've got. Dennis is, is trying to push it more. Didn't realize that the shelving's movable and that we can do all these things and. But he was very impressed with our, the pictures that we have up around the library and, you know, was coming up with some other ideas about. Maybe we could do a spotlight on the soldiers or something like that, that we can kind of keep going together. This is a replica of. That's the. It's fifteen inches. Yeah. That's the life size version.
There's a couple of different ones. These stretches you put.
So I'm kind of like. Maybe he decided that.
Yeah, it's under his arm.
Oh, yes, it is. Then sure, it'll be easy to do. And then he did send me also the wording for stand that they would look at, that the sculptor did. There is one section of the, so this. The wording that, it's called Stand For The Flag. It's the sculpture and it's a Vietnam vet standing to salute the honor, the American flag as the parade honor guard approaches. So he writes, the base represents a sidewalk in the curb. The soldier lost his leg and is reminded at each step he has taken since that bad afternoon south of Da Nang. Yet he is still a true patriot as he clenches his teeth in an attempt to hold back his tears as the symbol of his country approaches him and he snaps firmly to attention. How many people stay firmly planted in their lawn chairs as the parade honor guard passes by? A disgrace to our country, but those, but more so to those wounded warriors standing next to him. That last paragraph, I'm a little like, yeah. So I don't think we need to. Right, so I was thinking, we probably just put the first, the first three paragraphs and stand and move it out. I think it will be, but I'm talking to Dennis and see, make, have him make sure. So I showed him the spot, very excited to see that. And then he also has, I don't know if everyone saw, but back when they did that, the photo journalism. Thing at one of the celebrate Steven Towns, the, the Ted offensive. He has a image of the, the poster that they used and with the man's signature. And he said, we would love to display that on the same spot. So we would have the sculpture, the poster and then the saying from the sculpture. And he seems like he's, he's ready to make it happen as much as he possibly can. So I just said I would put it to you guys, let you know, I'll know what the plan is and then.
Did you guys have this sculpture?
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's just sitting somewhere. I don't, it's probably a Phyllis and John's house, I guess.
So what's the location?
In the new section of, like, so those new, right in the middle of the, so to get the three different shelves, the middle shelf on the top. That way it's away from little hands, but still very visible. So, you know. And if we find out that it doesn't work out, like we try it and it's not working, try another spot, but I think that's.
If it worked out, like what's the time commitment? If it worked out, like, what's the um time commitment, like, taking this indefinitely or?
That's a good question. I don't think they have. I don't think that we got that far. I think it was kind of more like, let's just get it here first. That's, yeah, unless they've some where like down the, down the road, get a building of their own.
Oh, right.
Yeah, so I thought that was a good idea, but I would let you guys know and what everyone thought. Make sure everyone's okay with it before we go ahead and say yes or there, so.
Is it super, super valuable?
Um, I don't know. I don't know what the value is. I think it's not an act, I I think it might be a study of it. Yeah, I don't necessarily think it's.
If it's something that would just like not be a big deal on insurance or insurance would say, oh, you should have had that listed, you know.
Yeah, that's a good question.
Or if we don't own it, would it be covered on our insurance?
Yeah. I'll ask, I'll ask that because I, that's a good question. Okay, I'll, I'll send this back to Dennis and ask him if he knows. And then, um, so, so we have that, so okay to to move forward with that, Ben, is that good to go? We have to get separated. Okay, all right, well. I don't necessarily, I have no idea. What, yeah, 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 that would be a lot of risk. All right, I'll ask him and then go from there. So if it's not worth a huge amount, then we're we're good to go if it is, or it could be detrimental, we'll revisit. Okay, um, I did say I would have the veterans website or veterans page updated by this month that and sorry, it's just been a very busy trying to get everything together for summer reading, which is starting off on tomorrow and for the teens and Saturday for everybody else, babies and little ones. Um, we happen to be staff meetings again, which has been lovely. Our scholarship, thank you for everyone who voted. Um, it was given to Sadie Giamara, and she is actually someone who's come into the library since she was a very little girl. And she did some story times for us, like she wanted to run the story time, so she ran, you know, pajama story time and read the books to the kids and um, so she and she was extremely grateful and she was just like very happy to get this. Yeah, she was great. So I did put a press release out to um the Eastwick. I was also going to possibly put that out as well to the um, for some of the other little papers that continue, just to see if they pick it up, we're interested in it. Uh, Louise has taken over the social media. She's doing a great job. She didn't have, didn't have connection for a couple of days, which was why it might look slow down a little bit, but she's back up running, so all good. Um, I have emailed our accountants trying to get some advice on QuickBooks. I'm still waiting to hear back from them. Paul, we already heard from. Uh, Rebecca is still helping with story time and it's going really well because they split up the kids. So we have toddlers in one group and preschoolers in another, and it works out pretty well. Um, she is volunteering her time because she says she just really wants to stay active with the library, so it's not forcing us to have a great professional helping to run story time, so um, we'll see where that goes. And we are going to continue story time over the summer. If anyone asks, story time is going on through the summer, we're going to, we will take off. I think we're going to take like the sixteenth, twenty-third, and the thirtieth. Um, like, so the very end of August, just to kind of regroup. But we're hoping that even with summer camp, we're still going to have um story time. Fingers crossed that goes well. And with with summer camp, I'm going to do um Fridays, we're going to do library time again with all the kids. So whoever hasn't signed up for summer reading by then is going to sign up for summer reading and they'll go home with their packets and it should be good. Um, so, yeah, summer reading, we're we're getting started on that and the expedition. And I did not include a picture, but I should have because our closet has been purged, cleaned and organized. And it's so lovely going in there. So if anyone wants to go and see it, it's really nice. I had to, I couldn't take it anymore. So I think that's pretty much it. Been a busy month.
We're pretty much on track for what we thought we'd be doing. I don't see any outstanding or unusual expenses built up there. Looks like everything's pretty much okay.
Looks good. Anybody have any questions?
Oh, you know what? I'll just say, um, in terms of the uh teen nights, we have gotten um like four hundred and something dollars for in donations, which is why we're able to do something a little bit more exciting for some of the kids, so, um, yeah. That donation came in through the Square account, so you should have, you can have access, right?
Okay, yeah.
It was in memory of somebody, so. Um, so, yeah, I just wanted to mention that. Yes, um, we're working on figuring out if she wants it to go towards the children's rooms or coming up with some plans. See where we go, so. Yes.
Okay, um, we'll go to committee reports. So major projects, there isn't a written report because it's new meeting, that's Paul, that's his clock tonight, so. So, um, I'm going to forget what has, what we talked about in the last meeting. So, um, yeah, I don't remember what, how much an update is. So I think what we talked about last time was that we were, we had been originally been re looking at some of the plans to scale back. Um, and then with this donation from um Jody's mom, um to focus in the children's room, we said, okay, we need to look at that again. And then there's a couple of other grant opportunities, things like that. So what we wanted to do is regroup tonight with Paul and give him those updates. And looking back on um looking at what we can put together for our project that would make sense. What can we do that focuses on the children's room, which will, we would uh, the furnace changes because that's both opens up the space in the children's room. Plus, it's very grantable for sustainable energy use things. Um, look at that and and as the focus and figure out how we sort of piece together something, knowing that we have this new money. Looking at the grant opportunities and going from there. So I think we had, it felt to me like a good discussion. He seemed engaged again as well, too. Um, and so.
We don't open up all the grants that. Average, too. You know, if you want to apply for grant, you have to match.
Right, yes, yeah. Right, plus whatever we would have kicked in, so it's a, it it helps a lot. So, uh, we set a meeting for him in July, beginning of July, uh, after he has a chance to digest this and come back to some ideas. So it feels like there's some momentum now and we'll be able to 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 do something, so. That is the major projects update.
So you said last month we were seventy-five percent matching grant, that mean you provide twenty-five, they divide seventy-five?
Yes.
That's for these, if we threw in twenty, then we'd get sixty.
And we have, um, we had originally been talking about maybe some of our special projects coming as well, so. And another possibility is there's these T-Mobile grants that are out there that look, I don't, we don't know a lot about them, but they don't look particularly onerous or restrictive or anything. Um, so there's potential there, so there's, there's a few things that are, that could make this actually be able to to accomplish a project.
Is there any paperwork that has to be done for the grant or?
I don't think they require anything like that, as far as I know, uh, but but just the, just.
Oh, yeah, no.
Okay, so on to the related topic of fundraising, so the report was sent out. Um, uh, and uh, just head on the the uh, anything we need to discuss, which is, so we had talked about we were talking about, we put in the budget uh that we were going to uh, assume that we had asked four thousand dollars for a fundraising event. Um, and we kind of have dropped the ball on that, if we're going to do that, uh, if we're going to do it, we need to start planning as soon as possible. Um, and uh, I missed a meeting this week that Sarah and Kim had, uh, just parts to talk about ideas. And one idea came up about trying to see about the new venue, the seventeen cherry plane. Certainly seems like a great venue in terms of the large space, all of that. Um, we don't know if they're, they're doing group events like that. We don't know what they're, you know, we don't know anything yet. And we might be able to dig into that. Let's get Mike, we see Mike is playing there.
Well, we were thinking harvest festival, everything, so around that. But I've heard is that they've been passed.
Yeah.
And animation's going well, so like, that's really good for somebody to go in and go, hey, we wanted to, you know, work with the charitable thing, you know. And, um.
But they have less than a need for to to show people what they have.
Mike has been talking with the guy, like, he's been stopping in and seeing him fairly regularly, so could definitely ask him to be an ambassador for us.
Great. So my concern with the timing that you guys talked about after the fact, after. I love that justice is, is, I, I don't, it's too close to annual appeal. We can't, I don't think we can, we're cannibalizing annual appeal because it's unless, it must be event with something that has really very little to do with the library who are attracting people because of the event itself. Well, what what is, what what's acceptable, like, is September also being close because we don't have that much time. Exactly, that's what I'm. And we know that even last year's event, which seventy-fifth and whatever. Was really tough to get off the ground. Yeah, and it did eat in a little bit.
Yes.
Appeal, which, you know, balanced out, but this time we have. So I guess another thing we could do is is try to find a way to also have a fundraising component to it, but that's a little awkward. So welcome people. Right, yeah. Nice you're new in town, but. I mean, a harvest thing. I guess my larger concern is, can we think of an event that is not just going to bring in the same people who are, who are going to write the checks to us anyway? Do we have something, and you, you know, Scott, you've talked different times about dances, but like, is it, and that's a very dance space. And like, would that attract?
That's what everybody's go there for. And I know a couple of people have have made comments about people who are going to have line dancing again.
Does anybody have any? I I know nothing about.
I, yeah.
I don't know about that. We're just talking about dance. There's a whole dance culture in the area, there are certain venues where people will go. So if you have it and it's an appropriate venue, there's a group of people who would spend a certain amount to do that.
Yeah, like people will go to the bakehouse.
Because that's, that's sort of what we were. You said, yeah, that's, you know, a possibility. And it's possibly that might serve the venue and. But she knows, she knows about that, I do not.
Is it like square dancing, where you like? So you have to teach people steps.
But they're, they're relatively simple, so you call it out and. No, it's, it's much simpler than the square, but you don't circle, you just have them line up. One step forward, one step back, shuffle all the way, shuffle back.
But it's the same thing where there has to be something.
Yeah, but a lot of, once you're getting used to it, it's fine, I guess.
Right, you do the hour first, yeah. Same for the swing.
That's the evening.
Yeah. But the, when the food lake has, I mean, those are like a hundred and twenty-five dollars dinner and dancing. Make that a person, and they were, they sold out every time. But they're on that circuit, the swing dance circuit, but that that is not a swing dance. But square dancing, line dancing, that kind of thing.
Yeah, it's counter dancing. Well, counter dancing is in a line, but not a square. I was looking to see if there's. Yeah, I think, like, Tom Pecoraro had a counter dancing thing or something that was. Hey, my group of. There's, there's a lot of that around. And I don't know what people pay for that. I don't know if it would end up being a fundraiser.
Totally different than your annual appeal crowd, that's for sure.
That's what I would think.
Um, is that new venue?
Yeah, something like that. Was it them or was it?
No.
Nettie was still here.
The li- the library.
So it was Hancock Library. They did amazingly well there, and Nettie kept saying, we've got to do something. Yeah, she did, they did a dance, it was.
They donate the whole venue.
Gotcha, well, that's why they did so. Okay, got it.
We might be able to work something out with some cherry square, cherry plain square, whatever, though. Because in theory, people would pay to come to the dance, you would design a drink first, they're going to spend their money drinking there.
So I think this is worth looking into. I don't know if we're going to, timing wise, how this will work. And we may not be able to meet our goal for the event this year, but it seems like it's worth pursuing because even if we should, okay, we'll do something, you know, big winter or something, or, you know. So people agree that's sort of something to pursue. Yeah, I mean, it it either that or find a way to get an additional four thousand through the annual. Right, right, which we can do through our new board member. We'll give her that.
Oh, yes.
Oh, so you're something crazy. An extra four thousand for the annual. Yeah, but I don't know. Yeah. Yeah, I mean. And it also makes it easier to respond with the people.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. So, yeah, but I don't think that's going to translate into.
How do people feel about, like, trying to get an annual event if we're going to try to establish annual? Something that has appeal outside of the library crowd, like a dancing. Having it more April and that's, it's far away from the annual appeal. Um, it's before people are kicking in for the, you know, I feel like May comes and I'm, I don't want to do anything outside of my yard, you know, um, or or fun at the beach kind of things. And then, you know, October is, you know, there's, it's back. And then you're, you know, coming into Halloween and Christmas, and it seems like April still starting now.
Yeah, and it's still sort of depressing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So. Yeah, as opposed to trying to force it into having it happen this year.
Right, National Library Week is in April.
So that might also tie it in. Uh, April twenty-third through the twenty-ninth.
No, but it's a totally different crowd. Yeah, but, yeah, you're not, you're not. I think if the event had. I think if the event has some sort of value entertainment value.
Exactly.
Or an event value.
And you've got, you've got a built in audience because these, you know, people, you know, dance and give people totally different crowds than the ones you're sending letters to, to raise money for the library.
Actually, the appeal is to have a fundraising of the appeal to people.
Don't even care about the library.
Exactly.
They just want to go to the next. So you charge like fifty bucks for the passes. It's all of a deal. Yeah, a hundred people show up.
Well, let's, let's start looking into this. We'll see what we can do.
I mean, is there any certain hall that you want to have it at? I mean, you could have it at the fireman's field. Oh.
I mean, you could. It's just, is that, is it more appealing to go to a new venue than like, got, yeah, got the Built in.
Yeah.
What I heard. Good. All right. So we've got some work to do on that. Nothing else, else to say on that. Elio, we have made that purchase because I have a free three month deal, blah, blah, blah. I went to the first little training session. I need to get focused. I think next week I'll have more time to start looking at that. Cause I think I would like to see if we can at least upload
Yeah.
To some degree rather.
Well, it's a lot of data entry.
Yeah.
You're really, you can't
Well, you can upload a Excel sheet. So and they say they will help you with the initial upload. So if we can clean, I can get the sheet cleaned up enough, even if we have to go back and make some changes.
I think that is great enough. Five hundred. It's probably five percent because of that system. Because it's so easy to keep track of everything.
I think it is gonna be, I mean, it is All right. All right, eight o'clock.
Random marketing. Random marketing. Our programming survey, we basically decided that we've come to the end of the road with it. We have thirty-four complete. So we'll write up a report on the findings. Some of it's sort of interesting. I'll have a report for next month. Meeting. As far as the second new resident welcome event, we're just taking place August sixth from eleven to one. We were planning to do a bagel and cream cheese thing and then ask people that want to come to bring like a cup of their favorite fruit. And then we'll put all the fruits together for a big community fruit salad. I sent it, save the date out to all the not-for-profit partners in town. Didn't hear anything back from anybody. Followed up again with Arlene. She said, oh, there's something that we're doing just the week before. I don't know how that's gonna work. I said, there isn't really much that it demands of you other than to have a welcome kid and have somebody here to be a friendly face. And I haven't heard back since that. So hopefully they will still do it. I also updated the press release from last time. So it's ready to go except for I need to know if the historical society is going to co-sponsor or not, because that language is in there. And also, it would be great if we had a decision on what we were gonna follow up, the, what, what program would follow up.
Oh, right, right.
So that I can say, say later for the block.
Right, yeah.
And I'm not planning to send it out until early July. So we have time, but
And last time we co-sponsored, it was going to be
Yeah, we don't need to.
Right.
I, I told her, it's really more for you. It's a co-branding opportunity if you're interested. If she doesn't get back to me, I'll just take the language at the end of that.
And I did mention to the fire department again this week and pointed out the fact that we got three, basically three new members through the event. So it was a worthwhile event.
So the other thing we need to do for that is to update the existing flyers. Since we have them, you know, we just need to change the details and dates on those. So that'll be fairly easy.
I started the letter thing to send out for the mailing and a, like a personalized note. Started that this week.
Great. And then hoping that, you know, as many truck users as possible would, will come as you did last time, just to be friendly, welcoming. It was kind of a fun event, I thought. And I was going to talk about the Harvest Festival thing, but we already kind of covered that. So at this point, as far as that goes, we're, we're thinking, trying to get some dance together, still thinking about Seventeen Cherry Plain and, and that Mike will be the
Or he can make an introduction or whatever. But, but yeah, he's definitely got a relationship with that.
Okay, all right.
And he's playing there something.
Okay. Everything else that we talked about in the meeting, this has pretty much been covered. I went to the indivisible thing more for the food pantry and there was a beekeeper there who is really kind of interesting, local. And Kim was interested in possibly having her come in as part of the speaker series. So we followed up with her. Waiting here back on that. Otherwise, that
I explained around the twenty-third, wasting your hip hop. So I'll talk to you about what we want to ask for that.
Or I could maybe even Yeah, okay.
Maybe Deborah might be interested in tagging along if you make it a social thing.
I'll accept her too then. Blew up on
I have to check. Yeah, one, one, one or the other.
I'll mention it to her. And then you can also
Okay. All right. Okay. Building and grounds. It's pretty much all on the own report. I don't really need to go over anything, but a nice thing, nice thing to do goes out some junk there on your truck for the bucket of the hunt garlands. They are It looks like it. I think it stopped for a minute there.
No, the internet's been going on like every few minutes on computer.
It's like
So thank you for all the difficulty, Scott, for those parties. What are we thinking? Stop, we're just going
Weeding.
Oh, weeding.
Weed.
One new item. We sort of knew about it, but I can remind us again, the door over here on the, to the deck. So There's always something. Recruitment, no written report, but just to say that Deborah's gonna be coming to the July meeting and it's starting if she's already been looking at our annual appeal and other reasons and talking and, and she's, she's all fired up and needs to go and should be All right.
Oh, actually, before we get off, oh, I'm sorry. After we go, I just want to throw an immediate plan through there too.
Okay.
Um, the tent is up. Camp planning is going well. We hired Haley Beckwith, who was a the one of the camp and has been a counselor for many years, I guess. And I mean, I'm just meeting her. So, but from what I understand, she's been around for a long time. And she's did a great job. We interviewed two, her and another woman. And we have no choice. Okay. So it's gonna be good. She's really familiar with the camp and community and and doesn't have another job. And done lots of other programs coming. I think we still have like one or two days. If anyone has suggestions for a program that can come here, great. Hey.
The museum at Skidmore.
Okay.
Yeah. They used to come and do the coolest programs at the library.
I don't know. They've had that in years. Cause I don't, I don't even remember.
I haven't seen that in the previous ones, but
And also, do you ever have one? Do they still do that?
They haven't come in years. The last time they came, it was not a very successful program. So it was decided not to, not to come back. At least that's my memory of it. I couldn't be wrong. It might be, might be confusing, but I'm pretty sure that that's
My sort of cut through and stuff and make movies or
Maybe.
Well, no.
I mean, it could be
I would say the library and Becky to go. Every time I've been here, so he's been asking for an application.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have to look and see how many have come back. It, it always comes in. They always come in at the very last minute. So
But, and those swim lessons are getting organized to dance in. We did last year and I think those applications are gonna be are available.
Yeah.
We'll go in a moment. Okay. Well, we only have one or two days now, but there is something coming. So that's the recognize a lot of stuff.
Thank you to, to you. I know a lot that goes on this time of year for planning this and Kim too. So, yeah.
Yeah. Moving on.
You want to do some of those strategic?
Make sure she's not there.
It seems like she was really on top of it.
So I just want to say, if you're doing things for the library, send what you're doing to Kim and me. Because we need to provide a plan as, as important what we're doing. So let us know if you would attend a meeting or attend training or whatever. We really would like it to be something where everything all of us are doing is reflected. Everybody spends a lot of time on my or your stuff. So it will be reflected. And the next, in July, we'll have the second quarter. So as you started to see, like visually what's going on, it should be like even way more, which is what we're doing. So
So something like the programming survey, the combination of getting input from the community and also
Yeah.
writing up results, you, you will plug it in where you see better.
Or you can, we, we can do that. But if you okay, I'm doing this because it fits right here.
Okay.
All right. Yeah. Which however you want to do it.
Okay.
Old business. So last time we brought up I think it stands for now, Steventown. Shoot, Steventown.
Oh, that's the energy.
Yeah.
Clean energy communities.
So it's a, a, a new committee that we, working with the town board, similar to what has gone on in Bellevanin, they're able to work on things that help. Sorry. And I didn't refresh my memory on how to say this. So like in Bellevanin, so if you, if so many people sign up for solar, not solar panels, but you know, getting your solar energy, your electricity through that, you get, the town gets so many points. And then, and then that all builds to being able to fund things in the town to make energy improvements and such. Anyway, they need they need to have some local partners that just basically say that they are on board with the, the mission. And on the library side, if we were to decide to be partner, they just like wanna just have us help like host a, host a program, which we would probably do anyway. So something like that. So we brought it up last time. The group that was here was pretty much in agreement, but because we had several people missing, got one of us to hold it over to this meeting to see if other people had any items they wanted to discuss about that or feelings on that. And, you know, they were part of the, they had a table at the indivisible. Right. Well, yeah, yeah. So I think they were advertising some of the options for my brain stopped working about five minutes ago. Maybe it was longer than that. Heat pumps, heat pump, right. Information, heat pumps and Yeah.
They, they, they gave a presentation at our church.
Okay.
Wasn't terribly involved. I just gave the general
Right.
Of what they've done.
I think it makes perfect sense for the library to support, get supported. It also fits in our
Future plan. Yeah.
Nice organization, nice people that are interested in doing good stuff.
Community education part that fits in. Very good if we, I'll let Michelle know that we're
Great.
Okey dokey. Bylaw reviews. Kim, any word from?
No, not yet. I just sent him the, the bylaws, but he's definitely happy to leave them for us.
Capcom accounting, the Melanie situation.
Oh, man. I mean, I looked at the last minute notes in the last meeting. I didn't see anything. That's the Melanie issue.
Yeah, I know. I'm trying to see it. Trying to see it.
Just, just so you know too, the credit card expires at the end of this year. So, and her name, Melanie's name is still on the credit card. So you just never got a new one. So Well, it says Steventown Library and then it says her name underneath. So we can still use it, obviously, but we'll need to, that'll have to be changed at some point. It's probably linked to our social as well. It's not a good thing. Yeah. I'm pretty sure it is. Cause you have to use if you deposit change in their change machine, you have to use her social as the PIN number.
Oh geez.
So
Yeah, we've got it.
Yeah. Yes. Or her last four of her social.
Regardless.
Thank you. You already mentioned
Still waiting.
And then Upper Hudson's responding to challenges. I just left this on there because some people were going to attend some of the sessions. I didn't know.
That was in June.
I did not.
I did not too.
I was gonna try, but I was not able to get there.
Oh dear.
Stay, stay strong. Don't worry about it.
We're good.
But they are gonna do another one. Like they're doing a repeat in August. Who knows?
Remote.
Yes.
So like if you need credits, we can set one up and do
Okey dokey. Republic is here. Any new business?
One, operating fundraising thing. When is for that foul and the
They
Fire.
Nineteenth.
Our announcement.
Were we gonna do something? To see if we could place some money while those events are going on.
Is there a
No, it, no, I just will have just come home from all, from Italy that day. So I won't be able to
She need mushrooms.
I don't think
The dry mushrooms.
Oh, okay. I'm sure there can be snow. Yeah.
Okay, maybe that won't work, but
Probably not. But I do think that something should happen. Yeah.
That's fine. I will not be that day. So I'm not coming back to Italy. I'm excited.
Well, I mean, I can see if I can help plan something and then, you know, during the month of July and August, and then. You guys can, and I will come and say hi after I get away.
You guys good, we're good.
The bake sale was, when we did just the bake sale at the park, yeah, um, I don't, you sold.
My stuff's much nicer now. It really is, I'm not. I'm afraid, you bought that crap last year, you can get a lighter one and a bigger one, that's your glazing.
And we didn't, we had a, we had, we had, we had a program last year here that was, I mean, it wasn't related, it was.
I'm trying to remember what. I remember the snow cones, I don't remember one. That was fun.
That, wasn't that, didn't we have a?
Cupcakes and snow cones, it was like all sorts of wonderful trash.
Oh, did we do, what did we do, like a summer kickoff?
No, that would have been summer, maybe that was summer, the end of summer.
Yeah.
Um. I am too, this is kind of irritating.
I just remember it was a lot.
I'll figure it out, I could figure it out if I just walk over to my office and get my calendar.
Yeah, I think before we tried, we tried to do it on the ground, so it's not, it's not in this car show. What do we do?
Well, I think we did, um, Birds of Prey at one point.
And I don't think that's this.
I think it was the year before we did Birds of Prey, we also have done, um. Like the market, uh, you know, um, the makers market, we did quite a few times, but that only brings in like twenty bucks a table, so that's not, you know, that's not lucrative at all.
You were interested in trying to couple Birds of Prey with a new resident.
That, yeah, that's what I just wrote down on my thing here, so, yeah, that was kind of, um. And then the other thing we have done, we did a carnival one year where, you know, I set up a whole bunch of games. And the kids had to pay per ticket, and I don't know how much we made off of it, it wasn't a lot, because it was, you know, a dollar a ticket or something like that, fifty cents. So, um. Let me see if I can figure out. It's got to be, you know, walking the two seconds it takes, it's hard to.
Think of something that doesn't also, uh, step on what the other ten organizations are doing.
Right, yeah.
They've got food, they've got booze, they've got. Music, they've got, they've got, it's like, okay, well, what else is there?
These are books. We ran out of cookies, we did not run out of books. At the end of the sale, okay, two bags, one dollar. Yep.
I don't think we did anything.
So it's just like in conjunction with Steventown Day.
Well, that's what it used to be, it used to be celebrate Steventown, then that has gone away, but then Fort Foul has been doing their own.
What is it, what, oh, oh.
Yeah, they have music.
Cider, wine. Well, well, work out cheese, all different kinds of cheese. Yeah, and stuff, yeah.
And some vendors.
The big music.
Big music, yeah. Yeah, so that weekend, we did, um, End of Summer Reading, which was our ice cream party, and I tried to get the songwriting and, you know, music with the River Jacks, even if that didn't happen. And then we did a, um, Live at the Library, but that was it, so I don't know.
This must be two years ago. Didn't add all of mine.
Well, two years ago would have been right in the middle of COVID, right?
We didn't.
I have cell phones.
We had all sorts of like ridiculous flames, stuff that makes you, you know, tongue purple, the good stuff.
Yeah.
Well, I would say if there's something, it, it doesn't feel like there's an obvious option, and certainly not one that's like an obvious fundraising option. You know, uh, usually if there's something kids related, because I'm. I'm, I'm not feeling anything. Coming right to mind of.
Um, this is unrelated, but related in the sense of it potentially be a fundraising opportunity, um, and I know we've talked about it before. But Michelle Van Horn again asked about having a community garden, and I know she's thinking more in terms of, um. Food, which I think we thought was, you know, produce, which I think we thought was like too, too much for us to take on, but maybe a, a flower garden where people could pay for bouquets. Might be, it would be, I don't know, if the grounds are, are. Well, set up for, for growing stuff like that, but if they are, it could be really kind of nice. And a way that we can make money throughout the summer.
Labor intensive.
Yes.
The soil is probably compacted, we need some enrichment, probably do raise beds, but that's a whole project. There are some nice projects to be done around there, but certainly, you know, people who are, we tend and all that sort of stuff.
And I think. That was her idea.
My concern around all of these things is people move out here to have their own places where they do all this.
Yeah.
They don't, it's not the city, they don't need this.
Yeah, although some people just don't have the right sun or the right space.
Yeah.
Or they don't have view.
Yeah.
Well, there's something to think about, I know it's not like a slam dunk for us or anything.
Yeah, the North Island started this, this part of the hunger, it's still happening, I think there's maybe twenty different places, summer schools, summer neighborhoods, whatever. But, um. The last few years, there's been an intern whose job is to take care of them, because you don't get it, people come and pick cherry tomatoes. Like as far as picking, even watering, they just don't do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, and they're like, they're like giving houses, it's like, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Alright, any other new business? There is no correspondence, so shall we adjourn?